Buenas en hofade. The Committee on Health and Veterans Affairs is now called to order. The time is now nine o'clock in the morning, and today is Tuesday, April 1st, 2025. Thank you to everyone joining us both in person and online for this public hearing on Bill 2138COR and Bill 1238COR. Bill 12 is introduced by Senator Therese Terlahe. It seeks to reserve the former Department of Public Health and Social Services main building in Mingilau for immediate use by Public Health and authorize its use for the Guam Community College nursing program. Bill 21, introduced by Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes, aims to transfer the former Department of Public Health and Social Services central headquarters from the Department of Public Health and Social Services to the Guam Community College for the construction of a nursing annex. Notice of this hearing was provided to senators, stakeholders, and the local media on March 25th, 2025, and March 30th, 2025, thus meeting the requirements of the open government law. In addition, the notice of this hearing was also posted on the Guam Legislature's website and the Guam Public Notice Portal. Materials for this hearing were shared in the committee drive and are available for print upon request. Recording of today's hearing will also be available online via Guam Legislature media on YouTube. I would like to acknowledge and recognize the committee members that are present here today: Vice Speaker and Vice Chairman Senator Tony Ada, Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes, Senator Vince Borja, and thank you also. Joining us is Senator Therese Terlahe. At this time, I ask all invitees and participants in today's public hearing for Bill 12 and Bill 21 to come forward and have a seat at the table. I'd also like to announce that we postponed the hearing for Bill 78 at request of the sponsor. The purpose of today's hearing is to gather input, discuss the potential implications of these measures, and ensure transparency and accountability in our decision-making. As we proceed, I want to remind everyone that each senator will have five minutes to speak. The author, however, of each bill will be afforded 10 minutes to provide a summary of their legislation. These time limits allow for a structured and efficient discussion while ensuring that all voices are heard. I encourage all speakers to be concise and mindful of time so we can accommodate as many perspectives as possible. Public engagement is the foundation of good governance, and your insights are invaluable in shaping policies that best serve our island. At this time, we will begin with remarks from the author of Bill 12, Senator Therese Terlahe. Senator, you have 10 minutes.
Sisus Massey, Madam Chair and colleagues, and to all of those who are here testifying or tuned in today, Sisus Massey. Bill 12 was introduced regarding the Mingilau Public Health Building to allow that that property continue to be within the assets of the Department of Public Health and Social Services for the benefit of the people of Guam and healthcare system of Guam. The bill allows that Public Health will use the building, if it's usable, of course, after the assessment, but make purpose of it consistent with the use of it prior to its being shut down and five years ago, and that they will be able to, if they believe it necessary, to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the Guam Community College to allow the Guam Community College to use it for a nursing program. Guam Community College, just like University of Guam, continues to partner with the Department of Public Health and Social Services for training of nurses. It also, the bill also allows that the property can be used by the Guam Community Health Centers Program. We currently have a health center in the north at Derrido and in the south at Inarahan, and that these, that they will be able, if Public Health does not want to use the building for a clinic itself, that they will be able to open those health centers for the people of Guam. And that if, and that if Public Health does not want the property, that it be transferred to the community health centers. And this is all based on concerns that were expressed in previous hearings by nurses and other longtime public health employees, including the Acting Chief Public Health Officer, who had expressed great concern that the services that they were providing in Mingilau had stopped suddenly and had never been restored to the, the number of patients or clients that they had served prior to the shutdown. And they were very concerned because many of these included pregnant women and those, they had other clinics there, specialty clinics. They had investments in this clinic, including the dental clinic lab and other services that were very convenient for patients, and because of the multiple public health bureaus that were in the facility at that time, that they were able to do a whole service approach for these clients. They, they had urged us to immediately resume critical health services in that facility. We, so this bill is intended to do that, Madam Chair, and pretty much, we understand that there's an assessment ongoing that's going to take a year now. And this is after five years of nothing, and we had earlier testimony that no one had set foot in the building in the five years. But we also understand that the building was shut down, and the testimony was, was a little bit, I don't want to say conflicting, but, but it's interesting. First of all, there was smoke detected by the security officer, but there was no obvious point of origin nor damage, according to the reports. And the fire, Fire Department's report stated there was evidence in an outlet in the director's office having fire damage and a fluorescent light fixture outside of the director's office. They also noted substandard electrical connections and water leakage, possibly from the roof. But when the insurance, the Public Health Director at the time applied for insurance coverage of this fire damage and repairs to the building, they were denied. And that time, Beneficial Adjusting Company said to the director, "After an extensive investigation, inspection, and review of the claim filed by our principal, Chung Quote Insurance, there was no damages noted, and thus there's no coverage under the policy and your claim closed without payment." It was reported that smoke was located in the vital statistics office, and the source of origin could not be determined. There was no soot cover or any fire-related damage observed. The fire sprinklers were not activated, and the power was shut off before any significant heat buildup developed and eventually cleared. It also states that DBW was requested to inspect the premises to determine the source of origin, and at the time of the field evaluation, information was not available from DPW. At the time, the Fire Department, and this is, that's unquote, at the Fire, the Fire Department also had requested DPW contractor, electrician, to examine the building and, and determine when it would be fit for full electric operations, and that they noted they were concerned about substandard electrical connections. And they did try to restart this building. I see the Fire Department Chief here, so hopefully, but the point is, whatever the damage was, the building could have, should have been repaired. We went through COVID, CARES money, ARP money. We shut down some of the southern and the northern clinics and used them for alternate purposes during COVID, and we're trying to restore those services. And yet, this Mingilau building in five years has not been able to restore its services. And the nurses at the time testified, Margarita Gay, for example, Community Health and Nursing Service Administrator, had testified about, she gave very specific statistics about the decline in services and that the relocation and displacement of the bureau had impacted a significant decrease in services. And so did Annette Ogun, the Acting Chief Public Health Officer, state that they, they needed to restore this, and they asked our leadership across this island to give us back our home in Mingilau so that we can release some of the burden at the community health centers. So I would ask that my colleagues do the same. Sisus Massey, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Terlahe. Before we hear from the author of Bill 21, I'd like to acknowledge the presence of Senator Telo Taidegui. Thank you. Majority Whip Senator Shelley Calvo and Senator Sean Gumitautau. Senator Tina Munya Barnes on Bill 21?
Sisus Massey, Madam Chair, and banana Sisus to you and the panel members here to present. The previous versions of Bill 21-38COR were introduced before members of this body were able to tour the abandoned Mingilau facility that used to serve as the headquarters for the Department of Public Health and Social Services. And I'm here to report today that this critical landmark needs the funding to reopen its doors now more than ever. I was very, very much appreciative of the invitation to join you, Madam Chair, and other committee members. And, Madam Chair, we all saw firsthand what has happened and what hasn't happened since the facility was shut down by government of Guam safety regulators following an electrical fire, which was in November of 2019. And during the tour, Madam Chair, we saw firsthand that this building has been stripped of its valuable infrastructure like copper wire, and we saw that usable equipment has been abandoned. We saw supplies and documents continue to be stored in what clearly is an unsecured building. And although I'm not a structural engineer, I observed cracks in the ceilings and the smell of mold and mildew. There has been a lot of conflicting opinions on how bad that incident was and whether the actual damage warranted a complete closure. But I'm not here, Madam Chair, to second-guess the inspectors from the Guam Fire Department or the Department of Public Works. In fact, I trust the preliminary findings from our experts at DPW and the Guam Fire Department. At that time, GFT Battalion Chief Ronald Castro, based on an inspection conducted on November 27, 2019, reported major electrical and structural repairs are needed to my office last term that was provided by him. GFT observed flooding on multiple floors and signs of burnt outlets. Chief Castro categorized the overall damage as extensive due to the leaking roof and electrical work needed. DPW Deputy Director, Madam Chair, Linda Ibanez was on site during one of DPW's visits to the Mingilau building, and according to her, DPW has already noted a lot of mold damage to the electrical and HVAC systems and repairs needed for the shell of the building, which is supposed to also serve as a fallout shelter. So far, there hasn't been any money identified by this body or by the executive branch to repair, renovate, or reconstruct the building. And that is why we are here today, to advocate for a legislative solution that will result in a win-win for Public Health, the Guam Community College, our government clients, and our college students. The Guam Community College over the past decade has proven it is an efficient and effective government agency when it comes to many things, but in this case, I'm focusing on its glowing record for construction projects. It has shown, Madam Chair, that it can obtain the needed financing and ability to pay its debt reliably, reliably and quickly, a commitment to environmental stewardship for its new facilities, and an ever-growing list of community and government partners who benefit from its capital expansion. And just like it did for the Guam Police Department through a shared DNA laboratory, Guam Community College is stepping up to the plate to provide a mutually beneficial solution for Department of Public Health and Social Services. And giving Guam Community College the ability to build on this Mingilau property means it can expand its nursing and allied health programs while also offering clinical and administrative space to Department of Public Health and Social Services. So ladies and gentlemen, the funding is out there for GCC to finally get this building reopened, but the key here, as the college can testify to, is it needs to be the owner of record on the property deed. This fundamental requirement to securing funding has been tested and reconfirmed with GCC needing to transfer property from its own foundation to the college proper in order to complete just one of its recent construction projects. But to be completely clear, Madam Chair, GCC has repeatedly assured our office that it has grants and loans at its disposal to breathe, again, to breathe new life into this property. In a meeting between GCC's president, President Mary Okata, and the head of DPHSS Employees Association, Dr. Okata confirmed that the administrative offices, clinical programs, and social services run by the Department of Public Health and Social Services can be co-located at an annex paid by GCC as long as coordination is completed before GCC seeks financing. Dr. Okata committed to working to allow the co-location of the DPHSS offices, divisions, programs, and services, and it did when constructing the GPD DNA laboratory on its campus. All GCC needs is government approval for its, for it to use the site for the proposed construction project. So as we receive your testimony and listen to your concerns, panel members, please know this, I will amend this bill to add in protections and guarantees that will make sure this project is mutually beneficial to both GCC and DPHSS, and will be relying on the feedback given by Public Health to make these changes. And before this bill is added to session agenda, I will reach out to Department of Public Health and Social Services management and staff to share any new amendments and to allow for another opportunity to suggest language that will strengthen this bill and allay any lingering concerns the departments have. I want us all to work together to get Department of Public Health and Social Services back in its home, and I firmly believe the best way forward is to tie that aspiration to something tangible, because it isn't just enough to make a promise. We have to do something real, use an option that actually exists to keep that promise. And before I close, Madam Chair, I am definitely looking forward to the testimony we received from our stakeholders, but also want to thank the Director of Public Works and, and Public Health for, for giving me a couple of their second minute of their time yesterday to, to share my idea and my perspective on this bill moving forward and to see what we can do to, to work together in the spirit of collaboration for our community. And as I've had previous discussions with the president of GCC in reference to this matter, we can all see, Madam Chair, that the successes that have been done is we don't need to reinvent the wheel. We just work on the successes that we've done together in the past. Let us do this together so we can literally open Public Health and if we, and literally be creative to step out the box. So, undankulu na Sisus Massey for giving me this opportunity to open and share my perspective on how this should work and, and thank the panel members and those watching for their time. So, thank you, Madam Chair. Sisus Massey.
Thank you, Senator Barnes. We will now proceed with public testimony on both bills, but as you provide your comments, please speak clearly into the microphone, state your full name, and indicate whether you are testifying in your personal or professional capacity, and we'll start to my left.
Hofadeen, good morning. Senator Matanani, Vice Speaker Tony Ada, Senator Shelley Calvo, Senator Sean Gumitautau, Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes, Senator Borja, Senator Therese Terlahe, Senator Telo Taidegui. Thank you very much for this opportunity to provide my verbal remarks this morning. I am here to jointly discuss both bills. Bill 12-38, an act to reserve lot number 2417-1-R7, the former Department of Public Health and Social Services main building in Mingilau for immediate use by the Department of Public Health and Social Services, and an act to authorize its use for the Guam Community College nursing program. And Bill 21-38, an act to transfer lot number 2417-1-R7, municipality, municipality of Mingilau, formerly known as a Department of Public Health and Social Services central headquarters, from the Department of Public Health and Social Services to the Guam Community College for the construction of a nursing annex. There are just a couple of considerations that I would like to provide this morning. One is, given that there is an ongoing assessment of the property, and it is already underway, it would be prudent for us to wait for the results of that assessment to be completed before any decision is made on the use of the property. And two, before the college will engage in applying for any funding to support either the construction or the renovation of this property, that the property be transferred to the Guam Community College. Without this, it would not be in the best interest of the college to pursue any grant funding or financing. And those are the considerations I asked this morning, and thank you for allowing me to provide my verbal testimony, and I look forward to any questions that you may have regarding this. Sisus Massey.
Thank you. Before we get to public health testimony, I'd like to defer over to Public Works because you did mention the assessment. And Vince, if you could go ahead and introduce yourself, and if you could kind of break down the contract that was signed with Emsco.
All right. Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and good morning to all you, the other senators on the committee. Pleasure to be here. My name is Vince Ariola. I'm the director at the Department of Public Works. We are the contracting agency for the engineering firm that will perform, that is performing the total assessment of the old Public Health Building in Mingilau. They basically just started in February. They're on a year contract to do the, the complete assessment. That assessment will cover basically all components of the building to include structural issues, mechanical facilities, electrical facilities, air conditioning, plumbing, restroom, shower rooms, and, and anything else related to the building itself. We were very specific in our RFP, in our scope of work, that they look at everything top to bottom, interior and exterior, and give us a plan and an assessment of, of whether the building is still capable of being used as, as an office building, or for that matter, any type of building where the public and GovGuam workers would be able to, to work in. So they will assess the building, they'll look at the structure, they'll look for cracks, they'll look for leaks. I imagine they're going to do some sound testing in the walls, in the ceilings. I imagine they'll also do some core testing, that's, they basically will drill a hole through the wall and determine whether the concrete is still solid, similar to this building. They did a core right behind Senator Borja there. They did several cores here in this building to determine if the concrete is still solid here. They'll look at, again, all the electrical, the plumbing, and, and basically bring it up to our current building code standards for, for habitation or, or for operation as a, as a public health facility or whatever the case may be. One of the things that we've, we've been looking at is, is, you know, once you bring that building up to code standards, there's going to be a lot of, a lot of issues that are going to be addressed, there's going to be a lot of changes to the building. As, as we've all, we all know, that building is, is, was originally designed and built as a fallout shelter. If we are going to go to code today and to get permits, there's some, going to be major changes, such as windows, I imagine additional exits, entrances and exits, depending on how many people are, are put in that building. The current estimate I have of the building, the size of the building right now is about 70,000 square feet. Again, it's about 70,000 square feet. The typical rule of thumb for offices, depending on what kind of offices, is there's, you use basically 100 to 150 square feet per individual or per employee that's going to be in there. So you take into, into account either their office, their cubicle, the hallways, reception areas, meeting rooms, bathrooms, training rooms, things of that nature. And when you lump that all together, you, it, it's just used as a basis. What we expect, once the assessment is done, be, actually before it's done, is our contractor will sit, will sit down with Public Health, assuming that the building can be used and renovated for public health use, it will sit down with Public Health or whoever's going to occupy the building and come up with a tally of how many individuals plan to work in there, what their job duties are, what their responsibilities are, how much square feet they're going to need. Are they technical? Are they clerical? Are they managerial? Is there going to be a lab in there? Is there going to be dental facilities? Things of that nature, and that would have to be built into the, into the design plans. It's not just a matter of taking, you know, 70,000 square feet and dividing it by 150, and all of a sudden, okay, that can house 500 employees. It's not that simple. It really has to, a lot of it has to do with, with the type of work and their responsibilities that are within sad, inside that facility. So that's going to take a lot of communication between the contractor, the engineering company, the architects, and whoever is assigned to, to occupy that building, whether it be Public Health and Social Services or GCC or any other office for that matter. But from, from our standpoint, from DPW, we will make sure that that, the design goes through, we will make sure that the assessment goes through, and at the, at, at the end of one year, we will have a design ready for construction. At that point, we should also have some estimates on what it's going to cost for construction with, with certain proposals and, and certain options, so to speak. We always ask for options. We don't just ask for one estimate and that's it. We, we always ask for several estimates, give, you know, in discussions with contractors and designers, just to make sure that when the, when the final number comes out, if we don't have enough money, we can start with option one and then work on option two and three or four later on. That's always the issue here. It's, it's going to be a, it's a funding issue, no different than even just procuring the, this, this, this engineering team. We actually started at, at 500,000 as, as, as money in the bank to procure the engineering services, and then we upped it to, I think, seven, if I remember correctly. And then by the time the, the RFP proposal numbers came in, I think it was like closer to a million. And then we did some negotiation, and we brought it down to, I believe, 970, something like that. So again, no, nobody here has a crystal ball, especially when it comes to construction costs. You know, they're, they're constantly rising, and, and that's just, we just, we just have to face that music, depending on, on, on what we decide with, to do with a building. That's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ariola. So, again, the period of performance is about one year. This assessment should be completed in February, March of next year?
February of next year. Yes, ma'am. And we'll be, we'll be getting updates. I believe we we get updates at the 35% level, 35, 65, 95, and then be during 95, that's our final negotiation with them, to make sure that the last 5%, we'll get, we'll have a good, solid 100% design.
What is the funding source for this contract?
I'm sorry?
The funding source is local funds, it's funding this contract?
It's from Public Health. I might, I might, I believe it's ARP funding.
ARP funding, okay. Thank you, Mr. Ariola. Fire chief, was there anything you'd like to testify regarding this bill? Bills?
Excuse me. Good morning, Hafadee. My name is Darren Burrier, Fire Chief, Guam Fire Department. Senator Matanani, Senator Trelahi, Senator Toniata, Senator Calvo, Gumatautau, Senator Tina Munia Barnes, Borja, and Senator Tytegui, good morning. As far as the fire department is unconcerned of this is, there was the electrical fire at the facility, and now it's under the assessment of DPW and determining what is going to be happening with that building. So, once that assessment is done, the fire department will then perform their inspections of the blueprints to determine fire code. And then after it's been, during the time it's being built, they'll perform periodic inspections as needed. And then, of course, after it's built, then it's all the inspections to make sure it meets fire code when it's built. So, as far as the use of the building, that would be determination on our, what it's going to be used for, whether it's for the Guam Community College, or for Public Health, or whoever else may want to inhabit the building. So, I mean, the fire department on our side is, we just are standing by ready for when those plans are being drawn up and for us to review.
Thank you, chief. If you could wait around, though, because I think we're going to have some questions for you a little bit later in this public hearing. Teresa?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, everyone. Manana Sidus, BIBA April Public Health Month. Thank you for this opportunity to, Hafadee, Madam Chair, Serena Salas-Montanani, Senators of the 38th Guam Legislatures, Senator Tina Munia Barnes, Senator Theresa Trelahi, Senator, Vice Speaker Toniata, Senators Shelley Calvo, Sean Gumatautau, Vince Borja, and Senator Telo Tytegui. Thank you so much for the opportunity to present testimony on Bill 12 and Bill 21, which both address lot number 2417-1-R7, the site of the former Department of Public Health and Social Services central headquarters in Mingilau. Before speaking on the bills, please allow me to provide an update on the DPHS Central Public Health Mingilau Assessment that is currently ongoing and a critical factor to consider when discussing the future of the Central Public Health Mingilau Site. DPHS funded the assessment with DPW's oversight as the contracting agency. The contract is awarded by Epsco through a proper procurement process. On March 3rd, DPW gave notice to proceed. On March 10th, the topography site survey was began. On March 13th, there was a kickoff meeting. Phase 1, March 14, a request came in from DPW's contractor to obtain information from Public Health. Public Health responded on March 17th, and we look forward to a pre-final assessment June 5th. June 6 to the 19th, DPW will review. June 18, a final assessment report will be provided. Phase 2 is expected in November 11th for 60% of recommended design. Number 14 to the 26, government review by DPW. January 11th of next year, submission of the 90% design. January 12th to the 25th, a government review again by DPW. February 26, a final submission of the 100% design or recommendation. With regards to the DPHSS's community health clinics, it is important to establish that Guam currently only has two federally recognized qualified community health clinics, the Northern and the Southern Community Clinics. U.S. Public Health Service Act Public Law 32-231 established Guam's Northern and Southern Clinics with the guidelines set forth by HERSA. HERSA is CHC's main funder, and I'm pleased to report that CHC, the Public Health CHC, has recently received notice of award from HERSA for the SAC grant, an award of $2,027,000 per year, starting this year till 2028. So, this is good news in light of a lot of the federal announcements lately. The Mingilau central location of which both bills speak to house Public Health's administrative offices and specialty clinic programs, such as TB, immunization, maternal and child health, dental, HIV STD, and the Ryan White Program. With the current purchase of Public Health's first mobile clinic, the department has recently submitted to HERSA a request to establish the mobile clinic as Guam's third federally qualified community health clinic. This was discussed in last month's Community Health Board meeting. Currently, we wait for HERSA's response. With regards to Bill 12-38 and 21-38, our comments are based on the bills as written, however. DPHSS strongly suggests that the assessment, the assessment of the central Mingilau building funded by public dollars be completed and its recommendations be considered in determining the future life of the Mingilau facility. Specifically regarding Bill 12 introduced by Senator Theresa Trelahi, considerations are listed, you all have copies of this testimony, to restore and enhance access to comprehensive health services authorized, continued use on the lot. Reserve lot number, the lot as we're speaking about, to be consistent with the with the purpose of Public Health Social Service Diagnostic and Treatment Facility and the mission of Public Health. The facility housed the specialty clinics, as mentioned earlier. We'd like you to consider that the department will need financial support from the government for infrastructure grants are usually restricted to program requirements. We, we want you to consider that entering into an MOA with GCC to allow a portion of the lot to be used by GCC's nursing program. However, Public Health has concerns that an MOA would not allow GCC to seek and secure construction funding. Other concerns, we have concerns about the transfer of the lot to Guam Community, to to the Guam Community Health Center Program for the purpose of establishing a central community health clinic. Currently established a central federally recognized community health clinic would require HERSA's approval and additional workforce that Guam struggles with. Currently, Public Health struggles to maintain desired staff levels to run its current CHCs we have today, the Northern and the Southern Clinics. Efforts to increase awareness of the Southern Clinic's services is, and what it offers is being planned. Another concern is if the property is not utilized by the Department of Public Health as a central community health clinic within five years, that the ownership would be transferred to the CHC for the use as a central clinic. For the same reasons stated above, Public Health has concerns. With regards to Bill 21-38 authored by Senator Tina Rose Munia Barnes, some considerations that the $350,000, which we appreciate to fund the construction, planning, study, development, and construction of a nurses' annex on the lot, unfortunately, our concerns are that this funding may not be enough. However, Public Health strongly suggests we wait until the recommendations of the Kermit Assessment is available to have a better understanding of the need. Some concerns is that the Mingilau Central Public Health Clinic should remain in the inventory of Public Health unless a transfer stipulates that Public Health specialty clinics will occupy, cooccupy the new facility. In line with the previous Public Health and GCC testimonies on related bills, the department once again offers the concept of a shared approach for the use of a Mingilau central location and recommend to combine aspects of Bill 12 and 21, as listed in my testimony. DPHSS strongly recommends that the facility assessment currently being conducted be completed, and its recommendation drive the future path of the current Public Health central facility. Thank you for this opportunity in providing our comments to Bill 12 and Bill 21 as written. Public Health greatly appreciates all the efforts to assist this, to assist our department. BIBA April Public Health Month, and thank you. I'm here to take any questions. Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We will now open up for questioning, and we'll start with the author of Bill 21, member of the committee, Senator Tina Munia Barnes.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And these first questions go out to Public Health. Thank you, Mrs. Ariola, for your testimony. You know, the last time this proposal was discussed was in early October, was early October of last year. So, from October 24 to today, what efforts have been made for for your department to secure funding to rehabilitate and renovate the Mingilau headquarters?
None, as of today.
Okay, so...
To renovate? You're talking about refurbishing?
Yes, to rehabilitate and renovate.
No efforts at this point.
Okay, and since we toured the facility in February, have any new actions been taken to secure the equipment, supplies, and documents that were left in the Mingilau headquarters, including but not only the medical equipment, furniture, and a large backup generator?
It is my understanding, Senator, that the facility is secured. However, vandalism happens, and is constantly checked with staff and re-secured again. So, yes, it's my understanding that secured, the facility is secured often.
Okay.
Re-secured even in that case.
Thank you.
Senator, if I can add to that?
Sure.
We, when I say we, Public Works and our contractor, Emsco, have taken complete control of the building. We have the keys, we, we have access to the building. If Public Health needs access, they will have to go through us, as we are the contracting officer for that project, for that building.
Okay.
That's correct.
Say that again?
That is correct.
Thank you. And then for for DPHSS, how, how, what is the status of your bid to consolidate your office leases to one centralized location?
Thank you so much, Senator Tina, for that question, because it's something that I'm anxiously waiting. It has currently been at the Attorney General's Office for review, the IFB. So, we are still waiting on the Attorney General's review process to be completed.
Well, okay, since you say that, because I was going to ask, how long would it take to finalize this process? And have your folks moved into an adequate office space?
We will, you know, going through the procurement process of an IFB is pretty lengthy. The length, the lengthiness is normally in the review process. And so, I, I would not dare second guess how long the Attorney General's Office will take. I, it will take as much as I guess he thinks it will, and until then, we can't move forward to the next steps.
Duly noted. I want to make sure that the public knows that you're still waiting and you're still trying.
We are still waiting for the review process of the IFB to be completed by the Attorney General's Office.
Thank you. To DPW, do you stand behind the preliminary observations of Deputy Director Ibanez, who noted a lot of mold, mold damage to the electrical and HVAC systems and repairs needed for the shell of the building?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
Okay. And I understand that the results of this inspections are pending, but at this point, in your opinion, is it a better investment of taxpayers' dollars to renovate and repair this building, or to tear it down to the foundation and start from scratch?
I really can't say right now until we receive a, the complete assessment done by engineers, architects, on the different disciplines throughout the building. That'll tell us basically what to do with the building.
Duly noted. To GCC, I know this has been repeatedly stated, but just so everyone here and everyone watching understands, if Guam Community College is not given the deed to this property, does that mean you cannot secure the funds for this CIP? Meaning, the only way that GCC can finance reopening this facility is if we transfer the property to you, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
That is our interest to have it transferred.
Can you please describe the process you undertook to partner with the Guam Police Department to build the DNA laboratory, and how you were able to incorporate the police department's needs and wants into the financing of that project?
So, when the DNA lab was first initiated, one of the requirements, first of all, by public law, was that the DNA lab be built, the crime lab be built on GCC property. So, that's the original crime lab. And so, during that time, before the original crime lab was built, land was transferred by executive order by then-Governor Camacho to the Guam Community College so that we could build the original crime, crime lab. In the discussion with GPD at the time, in order for us to do the DNA lab expansion, we, we discussed with GPD on what their needs were, but the only way the college had any interest was to incorporate classrooms and faculty offices co-located with that facility to support forensic science or science, to support the educational components that would be necessary for the lab. And so, through an application that we submitted to the U.S. Department of Interior, we received the federal funding to support the A&E, the, the funding for the A&E. And then, and then currently, so we, we applied for the U.S. Department of Agricultural Grant for a long-term low-interest loan, sorry, not a grant, long-term low-interest loan to secure the building, to funding for that building. And there were two buildings attached to that USDA loan. One was building 200, which is now currently building E, and the DNA lab. So, we took out a loan through the Guam Community College Foundation, took out the loan for the long-term low-interest 40-year funding. And we secured that loan at 2.8% several years ago. And so, that was how we were able to enter, I mean, to, for them to borrow it. We currently have a lease-back agreement with the foundation for the use of the building, but the property belongs to us. So, we own the property, the foundation secured the funding to build with the support from USDA, and we have a lease-back agreement with the Guam Community College Foundation. The funding for the $5 million is currently funded through the Guam Legislature at $200,400 per year. And so, that currently pays for the, the debt service. And so, initially, when the debt service was funded through the college, we received the $200,400, even though we had not started paying on the loan yet, because the building at the time wasn't done. However, once the building was done, we took all of those proceeds and advanced the principal payment, so that we can reduce the 40-year mortgage, if you would, on that property.
Thank you for that. And if the legislatures, if this legislature allows this mixed-use facility to move forward, what kind of team-based planning would begin with Public Health? And what assurances can you give today that this project can preserve the services that used to be at the Public Health Headquarters?
So, similar to, similar to what we did... So similar to, similar to what we did with GPD, in the design of the building, GPD was at the table. So they helped us design that annex to the crime lab. So the same thing would happen with Public Health and Social Services, primarily because many of the services they provide, for example, like the lab, like the TB testing, are areas where our students that are currently enrolled in the nursing and allied health programs can avail of clinicals. So we would enter into an agreement with Public Health and Social Services, one first to co-design the footprint. If it's not the original footprint, we'd still have to enter into a conversation as to how the space would be allocated. And then identify the areas of support that complement what the community college does already in terms of allied health and nursing programs. So we would work together with Public Health to identify those programs. There are some programs that we don't have, that we, we haven't started yet. For example, there is a request for X-ray technicians and we haven't done that because we don't have any space or the, the building that we currently have to support nursing is insufficient to expand any more nursing programs. We currently have the paramedic training that is ongoing. Right now, we have, on the second group of paramedics, we have 31 in this cohort that is just finalizing their ride-alongs. And so that's a program that is being worked with Guam Fire Department so that we can become an accredited entity to provide future paramedics for Guam because we're using an external source right now off island in Tyler, Texas for, under their accreditation until we can get ours established.
And the last question, Madam Chair, to GCC would be, I know that we may be getting ahead of ourselves, but I also want to give you some time to discuss your vision for a childcare facility in the area that is open after 5:00 to accommodate your students. What work will go into establishing the service and will there be enough capacity to enroll children or people who do not attend GCC but work in the evening at Mingila businesses? For example, McDonald's, Payless, Domino's, KFC and other establishments that are open well past 6:00 in the evening?
So when we first approached this idea about the use of the public health space, one of the interests we have was to have a separate daycare facility built at the back, towards the end, the back corner of the, of the, of the land so that we can support daycare services, not just to our students, but also the students of the University of Guam. Because we know that one of the barriers to students entering into higher education is the need for daycare after hours. Several years ago, the college did have a, did provide daycare services, as did the University of Guam. And at that time, it was, it was not financially feasible for us to continue that. So we closed that facility under our operation. But more and more, we're seeing now that daycares are necessary for, to provide additional support for, for our students.
Thank you very much, President Okada and Madam Chair. I just want to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to ask these questions as we continuously try to come and collaborate for a win-win solution for our community, our island residents. More importantly, as we continue to grow in the village of Mingila, which we call Mungie Town, the, the whole educational hub, the whole learning hub, the whole health hub is, is right at the heart of Mingila. And I think it's really important that we think outside the box. And one resources that's good is working closely with the agencies, GCC, Public Health, and then we've got the, the builders here and, and the fire protectors here to make sure that the building is safe. So thank you, Madam Chair. Truly appreciate the time.
Thank you, Senator Barnes. Before I get to you, Senator Turlai, I just had one question for maybe DPW or Guam Fire. And just to clear things up with the community that may be watching, why exactly was the Mingila facility, I guess, shut down? Was it condemned when there wasn't exactly a fire? Because when we toured the facility, that's what employees were telling us, that there wasn't, there wasn't a fire, it was just smoke. So what led to it to being shut down and being abandoned for five years?
I'll, I'll answer that, Senator. I, as the position of the director at, at DPW is also Guam's building official by statute. I read the reports, I discussed it with our deputy director, Jesse Garcia at the time, a couple individuals from GPA and also our chief engineer, they did the final inspections there. I think what you saw wasn't the real, the real area where the fire occurred. I believe the fire occurred downstairs and, and it was, it's, it's much, much worse than, than what you, you folks saw. But the report that I received and the discussions I got was that it's, the fire was electrically related. There was numerous violations of electrical hazards. If I could just read here, facility has multiple electrical hazards, potential to cause fires, electrocution and/or explosion. And it's signed by, I believe, two individuals from GPA, our, our deputy from DPW and our chief engineer from DPW as well. And, and, and also the assistant fire chief from, from GFD and the director at the time. So when this came to me and they said, what do we do about it? We discussed this at length. This wasn't just a decision that I made lightly. I take liability personally and, and professionally. It weighs heavily on me. I don't put my signature on anything until I know exactly what, what on earth I'm doing. For a little bit of background, my, I grew up in a family of lawyers and we grew up with the L-word. And the L-word was not just love, but it stood for liability. And so that's really dear to me. And so I, I sort of kind of resent individuals saying that we closed it down because we decided to close it down. No, there was a lot of thought process that went into this. Officials and experts took a look at this and one of the worst fires you can get, as, as fire chief now would, I, I hope he'll back me up, one of the worst fires you can get is an electrical fire because you don't know where it's coming from. And the conditions that they saw there, as a matter of fact, I wanted to go see it myself. I had just gotten, I was only seven or eight months out of an open-heart surgery and they said, no, you're not going to go in there because the, there were soot, there were smelling, it was, there was, there was a fire, period. And, and their recommendation was shut it down, so we shut it down. I was, I wasn't going to wait to reopen it and maybe house some of the employees at a certain area. Then all of a sudden, they, they start getting asthma or they have breathing problems and then they file a small claims or a large claim against government of Guam and it'll be them against government of Guam and my name's at the, the top of the list. I'm not going to do that. I, I, that's, that's a chance I wasn't willing to take. And if anybody wants to change my, my decision, you know, so be it. Thank you.
And had we fixed the electrical issues, replaced whatever needed to be replaced, would we be in that facility today if we had done that five years ago?
Is that for me? I'm sorry.
Either, either one of you.
If you could just repeat the question, please.
If we had addressed the electrical problems five years ago with the Mingila Public Health Facility, would we be in that facility today? Because we just were paying a company a million dollars to tell us that there's all these problems at, at that facility. But if we had addressed the issues that DPW had pointed out five years ago, wouldn't we be in that building today instead of it being abandoned for five years?
I, I, I don't know that, Senator. That's why we wanted to, to do a complete assessment of the building. As I understand, there's also some leaks going on, roof leaks going on. So that, that, that tells us and the engineers have told me, there's some structural issues in that, in that building. So you put structural issues together with electrical issues, you're, you're not asking for, for good results. So, you know, I err on the side of caution and, and health and safety for, for our, our employees and, and the people that visit that, that facility.
Why did it take so long to have this assessment conducted? I know that it, I saw the IFB RFP, October 2024, but this fire supposedly happened, or electrical fire happened in 2019?
If I could speak a little bit to that, if, my recollection is the fire happened in 2019, I think, I, if I recall, Public Health's priority at the time, because we closed the building down, was to find other offices. So that, that was, that was a priority for the, for Public Health at the time. It wasn't until, I believe, July of '23 where we received an official notice from them to, to conduct an assessment of, of the building. A little bit prior to that, I had talked to the previous director about what it, what it would take to do an assessment. So we, we had talked, we conversed, we conversated and I said, you need, you need to formally write to me and, and give us a work order so we can be the contracting officer to do a, a complete assessment. Because we didn't have the capability in-house, we just, we just don't. The building's too big, it's over 70,000, where if we, we don't know where an electrical fire may start. It may just be limited to that. It may be throughout the building, we don't know. So based on that, he, I received a memo, I believe sometime in July or summer of 2023. And then we just, we just started the work on that internally, putting the scope of work together, running it through legal counsel, going through the procurement, the procurement for construction and construction-related activities. It's, it's tedious and it just takes a long time.
Thank you, Mr. Areola. I'll now refer to Senator Turlai, the author of Bill 12.
Sisus Massey, Madam Chair. Thank you again for all your testimony. For Public Works, the previous director had instructed, informed us December 15, 2021 that they, quote, "have requested a copy of the SMS assessment from DPW," unquote. He, he stated that, quote, "Once the assessment is completed, our department will work closely with other agencies to determine what would be the best use for the building," unquote. That was December 2021. And you're saying you got a formal request in 2023, but he made it, he told us he had already requested that?
Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
So you're saying this is inaccurate, that he requested it in 2021?
I don't have what, what you have in front of you, ma'am.
All right, but that was his response to us, that he had requested it from DPW in 2021. Okay, my question is, in the RFP, you said that the consultant shall be required to assess the building, identify all repair and renovation requirements needed to utilize and operate the building for administrative, medical and dental clinic purposes. But when you talk about the contract, you're talking about a design. Did the RFP also require that a design, well, that, no, it talks about a design, but for these, these purposes also?
I'm sorry?
That the contract says that they shall complete a design for the above purposes, which are the administrative, medical and dental clinic purposes. But you're discussing all other types of purposes, like, so after we get the assessment, and how soon do you think we will get the assessment as to the actual condition of the building?
The, the complete assessment, the complete design is.
No, not the design, just the assessment part. Because somebody has to make a decision after the assessment of whether it's, we can, it can be renovated or not, how much, of course, it will cost, will come later, but whether it's actually occupiable or not. And then you need to have a design. And it sounds to me like you're anticipating a design for different purposes other than administrative, medical or dental clinic purposes.
Well, we are, in our discussions with Public Health, if, we, we, we basically based our, our, our RFP and our scope of work on, on if the, the Public Health were to reopen completely.
Okay.
So we went, we went the whole shebang, if you will.
Right.
And so that's why we had a, an exhaustive and a generalized scope of work. But if it's just, if, if we're looking at just the preliminary assessment, I believe that's at 120 days after notice to proceed. So notice to proceed was, I think, sometime late February. So 120 days after that, we should receive some, some, some draft assessment.
All right. So do you agree that based on this language, the goal of the contractor is to assess whether Public Health can restore its operations in this building as they were prior to the fire?
I won't know that until I see what their assessment is.
No, is that what they're assessing for? Are they assessing for whether this building can be used for a legislature or for a public health administrative, medical and dental clinic?
It's.
Or for a school?
It's.
Which one are they assessing?
It's for the public health, that's our understanding.
Okay, that's my understanding from your language and the RFP and the contract. But today you're talking about, you know, the design could go any way. Who will make that decision as to what it will be designed for, what capacity, what?
I think it's pretty clear here, Speaker, Madam Senator. It, it says the, the, the design for administrative, medical, dental clinic purposes, which was Public Health for the last 30, 40 years.
Okay, that's what I'm hoping. And DPW, I mean, sorry, Public Health is paying now for this inspection report for those purposes as well, Director? Is that your purpose in this inspection report?
Yes.
All right. Because we're talking about also, you're suggesting that it be used for GCC and the director saying we might not have, we might have to redesign it for other purposes, depending on who is going to be in it. But we should already know who's going to be in it, what services are going to be provided and that type of thing, right?
Now, if somewhere during the course of this assessment, legislation is passed, funding is given to us and, and, and the bottom line is okay, maybe a portion of Public Health will be there and then maybe a, a third of it will be for GCC and classrooms and facilities and things like that. Of course, that direction's going to change, but we're, you know, we'll, we'll take that, but it's going to cost additional money if that direction's going to change.
Of course, if the direction changes.
Right.
Yeah. The Army Corps, when they assessed the hospital, they did it in five days, they did their inspection and they, that was in November 2019. And they reported it, their findings out in April 2020. So that was five months. And then it was up to the government to decide, based on their recommendations, how do we move forward? Do we repair it as they told us it could be repaired, but these were what we would have to do? Or do we demolish it and, and build a new one?
I, I think the Army Corps, what, what the Army Corps did is they did their, you know, it's a standard ratio of how many beds, what's it going to cost for, say, 150-bed facility, complete with X-ray, urology, blah, 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 blah.
They also assessed the current condition of the building. That was very important. They could, they assessed the current condition of the building. So if we're going to take 300 and, well, 120 days maybe to get a determination of how usable the building is, that's what you're saying now, right?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. The fire, well, I also wanted to say, you know, for Public Health, I have the utmost faith in Public Health. They built that Mingila facility, you know, through the government, but it was Public Health. They built the northern and the southern clinics, the beautiful clinics. They did that with help, of course, from, I'm sure, grants and other things, but they did that. And federal funding may be available to the Department of Public Health, just as it was then, just as it, it is to GCC, just as it was for the School of Health at UOG, for their 8.6 million Department of Commerce Economic Development Administration grant to build their school of nursing. DOI funding, USDA funding, the GPD lab at, at GCC was the original GPD lab, not the forensics lab, was financed through court fees, judicial building fund. They don't own that, but they fund it. So I just think that there are other ways for Public Health, if they are, you know, willing to do this, to move forward and get this building back to the services that it was providing. And I think that should be the priority. You know, it is concerning to me that at the night of the fire, that was November 27, 2019, of course, you had to make sudden decisions. But GFD Fire Department, they closed it down, they didn't think it was safe at the moment, but they did recommend that DPW contractors, electricians deem the building fit, that they inspected right away. The electrical, they pointed out, we have an electrical problem and there might be leakage from the water on the roof or, right? And that those two things, to me, needed to be fixed. And if we were going to run it on generator, then they needed a bigger generator. That was already very clear in the Fire Department's report and as the chairman's, chairperson said five years ago. And yet, that was not followed up at all at that time by, and that's what's very concerning. It's like, and then when we get the report from the insurance company saying again, we don't see any evidence of that, I mean, that there, there were, there are electrical problems that need to be fixed. So yes, we should fix those, but it's, it's a shame. I'm glad to hear that ARP funding is now being used for this assessment. This is the first time we've heard that. I thought you had told us you were, you, you were going to do this. I thought you had told us you were going to do this on your own. So ARP funding had been set aside for this? When was that done?
We had to find it, Senator. We had to find the money for the assessment to be done.
Mm-hmm.
And that's where we found it.
ARP, yes. Yeah.
I think of the last, that's where we were.
Yeah. I wish we had done it in time so that ARP money could have been used to also fix it when we need it.
Sisus Massey, Madam Chair. Thank you, Senator. Thank you, Senator Terlahe. Senator Telo Tadegui?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning to my colleagues. I think, you know, it's kind of like memory, going down the memory lane here. I remember Vince, when I called you back in 20, I think it was 2021, about the report on public health in Manila. And then I was able to receive the documents from the insurance company to find out that only $600 was assessed from the insurance company in damages for, and that was just a door. So it's been sitting there for so long, even after the findings of an insurance company, that this so-called fire, an issue with the building, could have been addressed at a much lower cost. And yet, we sat here and sat here for years going by, and I do understand, you know, COVID was an issue, you know, we were addressing other areas of concern. And now that it's clear that the money to assess this is from ARP funding, and I guess on the restructuring of this, or the, to actually get it up and running so that whatever agency, whether GCC or public health, to renovate this building, you're assuming that it'll probably come from one of those agencies, the money to do this? It's not under DPW that would have to do the renovation, or at least, I just need to clear that up first.
Yes, as the government of Guam's contracting agency, whatever construction happens to that building will go through DPW.
Okay, whatever instruction. So the funding that will go to that instruction will come from?
It could come from public health. It could come from a grant.
It could come from GCC.
Basically, what we need is the account number.
So you guys will be the one that will be overseeing this transition to where it'll be?
Yes, yes, Senator.
You know, we're all experiencing the freeze on federal funding. It's always very scary, and we have to tighten our belts, and especially for both of these agencies that are sitting in front of us. We're already starting to see it. And I don't know, to me right now, it's important to provide the services that you have been providing to our people. One, to, you know, for education, to better themselves, so that they can, you know, take that fishing pole and fish for themselves, rather than it being handed out to them. And of course, with public health, there are so many people on this island who rely on public health for their medical needs that can't afford it. And that is something that, you know, we're all just on pins and needles about. But I'm hearing to, I'm sorry, I didn't get a copy of, Mary, your testimony. I did have a copy of, do you happen to have a copy in front of you that you can give to the staff to pass out?
I just provided it as oral testimony. I'll fine tune it and submit it in afterwards.
Okay. And if I'm not mistaken, you mentioned, then can you repeat again what you mentioned regarding the building must be in your ownership in order to get these grants?
Yes, it would be in the best interest of the college for us to own the property in order for us to secure any type of federal grant or loan for the facility.
But is there any opportunity without that, if it's not in, completely owned by you, that an MOU or any kind of an agreement?
Based on our experience, we've had two occasions. Based on our experience, we have to own the land.
I see. And is there any property in, oh, I know there was talked about, because we talked about this situation last term, and we talked about other property on GCC that can be utilized for the services that you're looking for?
We don't have any more space on our property.
Is there somewhere, Chamor Land Trust, or any kind of lands that are nearby GCC that can accommodate you?
So I've met with Department of Land Management, and there's potential, but we haven't, there has been no further conversation since.
But there is probability that there is some property right next to the University of Guam that makes it more convenient, especially for the students. If I'm not mistaken, it's right across GCC?
It might be behind George Washington, which is where we got the land for the forensic lab.
Okay. So that one probably gets a better, higher probability of trying to gain that property, especially since, you know, we all know that renovations can cost more. We saw it in the hospital. You know, the Army Corps of Engineers is saying that, you know, to rebuild the hospital, it's not far away from refurbishing the new one. So we might have an opportunity there, just in case. So I'm looking for your testimony. Now, with public health, you clearly state here in your concerns in both of the bills that the property stays within public health. Can you elaborate on that?
I'm sorry.
In other words, would it affect your ability for grants as well? Will it affect your ability to provide the services needed for the people of Guam? Things like that?
Yep. Thank you, Senator. First of all, for the record, we continue to provide these services, just not in central Manila. So just so everybody is aware, it's not like when public health left Manila, did the services end. They continue to be provided in the northern and the southern clinics, where our staff and the programs that were, the clinical programs that were located in Manila are currently housed. So we are still continuing to serve. Now, I understand that there's concern regarding the thinking that when we left Manila, that there was a decrease in services. I want to caution everyone that closing the Manila Center may have a portion of the reasoning of decrease, but it is also during the COVID time, when 2020 to 2022, we lost about 10,000 students, when I say lost, in the Department of Education system. Because when the COVID funding came, or the stimulus, or what do you, I forget what it's called, the stimulus, right? When they gave families, we also lost an exodus of people. Our senses went down with regards to folks maybe seeing that as a windfall, and then taking that money and relocating. So I think it's not really all the reason why. When people want to get the services, they will come. However, we recognize too that transportation is a problem, but not everybody lives in Manila. Everybody who accesses public health services go to wherever we're at, right? I mean, Guam is only 32 miles long, and it's really a small island. And yes, we recognize that the deterrence of health, like transportation, is a concern. However, again, it's not that we are not providing the services today. We continue to provide the services that was once provided in central Manila, just happens to be in the northern and the southern, and not in Manila. So I hope that answers your question?
No, I think you went somewhere else on that one.
Okay, so what is your question?
I was asking about the property being in your possession.
Oh, yeah. I mean, whether the property is in with us or not, we just want to be there. Now, I'm not really personally, you know, whether it's mine or somebody else, we would love to be in the central site if we can coexist with, for example, a partner like GCC, who is thinking of the nursing program. So the nurses learn their theory at the school, and then perhaps go to the front side and with, at the public health clinics, specialty clinics, and get their clinical experience in the front side. It would be like a match, a perfect match, because they get to just, you know, walk to their clinical experience, their on-the-job experience, if you will. Yes.
Well, it says here in Bill 21, and I quote from your testimony, that the former Manila Public Health Building should remain in DPHSS inventory facility unless transfer stipulates that DPHS specifically clinics with a co-company of the new facility. Well, based on the comments made from GCC, somebody has to own this, and it's, I guess, who's ever going to get the ability to get the funding, you know, first come, first served funding. Right now, we're not at that position. We're just assessing a building that's under the government of Guam's inventory that has been stagnant for so long while we're paying astronomical rental costs using government funds to pay for these rents. That's ridiculous. And if you ask me, there's a lot of people who live in Manila, quite a bit. You know, it's almost the third-largest voting district, along with Sinohania and Joni nearby, that been utilizing Manila. So there's quite a bit of people, and Baragada on top of that. So, oh, my time is up. But I appreciate the dialogue, and hopefully, we can find a win-win situation for everyone. But, you know, we're in dire times right now, so we need to live within our means. And thank you, GCC, for living within your means, actually. Thank you. I appreciate all the hard work that you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Tadegui. Senator Calvall?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Buenos en half a day, everyone. Thank you so much to the panel for your testimonies. Looking at both bills, Bill 1238 and Bill 2138, it's clearly, there's well intention to both bills for our community, so I'm carefully, you know, analyzing and looking through it. I just have a really curious question, but this is like way down the line in the future. Anticipating challenges with regards to operational management situation with, my curious note is for mixed and shared use of the facility. So I'm just thinking, you know, dual usage of DPHSS and Guam Community College Nursing Program could lead to conflicting priorities, administrative complexities, or dispute over space allocation. Anticipating all these, because honestly, I like the notion of sharing at the same time, but I'm thinking to myself, how will, you know, responsibilities and costs be divided between the two agencies should we go this route? GCC probably could answer, and then DPHSS. It's probably something that we haven't really thought about, because it's way down in the future, but anticipating it would be also nice to already project. Madam, Ms. Cada?
Senator Calvall, that can be discussed during the design. There's nothing to prohibit us from having two separate meters for the power, two separate meters for the water, to have them, you know, do the custodial for their side, or, you know. So we have similar agreement right now with GPD. So even though the facility is one facility, there is clearly, in that specific facility, you can clearly see where GPD starts and where GCC starts, because ours is separate but co-located two classrooms, one bathroom, I mean, one bathrooms, restrooms, and then two offices. And then the backside is, because of the nature of GPD is securely, specifically secured. So it really is in the design of the facility and how we allocate the space.
So it's really not a problem. It's actually something that is also good. Another question is, I'm just looking at Bill 2138 authored by Senator Tina Minya Barnes, which is looking at the limited flexibility in land use. The use restriction clause limits GCC to nursing and allied health programs. If, should maybe not, GCC priority shifts or funding isn't secured for the annex, the land could automatically revert to the government, disrupting long-term plans. I just wanted to see, I just wanted to ask if the land could be used for other educational or public health purposes in case? Sorry, my questions are all way in the future.
So the intent, GCC's intent is to actually conduct the educational components at the Public Health and Social Services facility, and not separately from where we're currently at? So we would, our interest is to have classrooms designed for theory, the instruction to happen at the DPHSS facility, GCC facility.
Thank you for your answers. That's all I have. Thank you so much against Sisus Massey, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Calvall. Senator Gumata?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for being with us this morning. I'm just going to take this in chunks, so I know, because I was trying to make sure I'm in with these two separate bills. On Bill 12, okay? Can anyone at the table answer this for me? For the record, which government of Guam, department, or agency has title to the subject property in Manila? And are there any agreements currently in place, including but not limited to liens or other financial commitments that would restrict the transfer or use of this property outside of its original purpose?
Guam Public Health and Social Services owns the property, owns the facility, and prior to 2019 occupied the facility.
But no other liens or anything like that?
Not that I'm aware of. At least that I'm aware of.
Okay.
I don't think so. I-
Where's your accountant, Therese? No, we're okay. All right. Okay, good. No, that answers my question. On the other bill, on Bill 21-38, I just want to add a couple of different questions. And this is more to the funding aspect of it all. For me, and this is more, and maybe Vince can maybe help answer, is there any consideration, and to Mary, too, is there any consideration to utilize historic preservation funds to support this project at the public health? Now, point is this, and I'm hoping, Madam Chair and the committee, I hope they would consider this, in, just, it didn't seem like it was yesterday, working at the judiciary, but the historic courthouse is the same age as that building in Manila. And yes, I get it, to the chief goes, oh, wait, you know, these can be considerations for the, all the different parts of that building. But if it's a historic place, why would we, as a government, want to take away that from our inventory or not try to build upon that building? And I just wanted to just check you, I know we're looking for money here, but couldn't we consider that?
I could touch a little bit on that, Senator. Thank you for the question. But, you know, having worked with the Guam Preservation Trust on previous issues, this building included, I know they have their set of standards, their requirements, and that's certainly something that we should explore, because you're right, that the original courthouse was just, they just cut the ribbon on that, and I believe a portion of the funding, if not all the funding, came from Guam Historic Preservation Trust. So if that qualifies, that's certainly something that we can look into. Because, you know, if we're looking at a complete renovation for all the disciplines that I just mentioned earlier, you're looking at a decent penny to renovate 70,000 square feet, right?
And just, again, why I ask, it just makes no sense to me to consider that we have a place of significance, but we won't give it significance in any part of our process. So, Madam Chair, I wanted to make sure that as we are considering, at least in terms of Bill 21, that there might be, there should be a consideration for historic preservation funds. Let me also ask this as well. When we look at this Bill 2, so sticking with 2138, I'm going to go to just the operations if I could. We do need people to take care of the over 16,000 people who are, you know, currently in our medically intelligent program. And I think at some point, I think the number's rising in terms of those who are on Medicaid. It's probably, what, 35,000 and above? But recognizing that it was stated publicly that you all need 33 physicians, Therese, to cover those programs, what information do- to cover those programs, what information do we have at this point regarding the number of physicians who would be available to treat and care for our families? Since we're not taking care of folks at Manilao, how are we taking care of them? And I ask this because it'll probably end up returning at some point to Manilao.
Yeah, thank you, Senator Gumitata. The Northern and Southern Clinic are clinical and provider staffing is continuing growing. They just got shifted and contracts go away. Providers, you know, decide to continue. Some providers don't, some providers retire, new providers come online. And so we're constantly, constantly looking at that. I'm happy to report that we actually have, in light of the decrease of OB-GYNs on Guam, we're actually, the health clinics themselves are actually getting a part-time OB-GYN very soon. And we have several doctors who are either renewing or coming online. So if you're talking about providers and doctors and nurses, it's a constant, we are constantly recruiting and constantly asking and seeking assistance now. The wonderful thing that we have to look forward to in the future is we're working with medical students who are residents and residents who are, want to come back home. And so they are very much a part of our discussion today. We meet with them regularly. Kayakamoto and I'm gonna forget the name, it's a Chamorro.
It's okay.
It's an organization of all Guamanian kids, I should say, who call Guam home, who have the desire, who's studying abroad, who has the desire to actually come home and practice at home. And so we meet with them, we're actually partners with them with several things. And, you know, looking to the future, that's what we need to do. We need to invest in our kids, whether it's scholarships or for them to go off violent and come back home because the brain drain and the talent drain is tremendous. And honestly, the traditional recruitment of, you know, just put it out there and they will come is not happening because nationwide after COVID, there's a decrease on, in the health field when it comes to providers. And so thinking outside the box, that's what we need to do. What are, where are the kids going to school and medical school? How can we support them to ensure that when they come back, that it's a seamless approach? In other words, they don't have to wait for months to get hired, but it's prior to coming over, they have a job ready and enabled. So this group of young medical students, medical residents, is very aggressive. They reached out to us, Public Health. We have meetings with them, they're joining us in a conference, they're putting a paper regarding workforce and how they're doing, what they're doing to ensure that their island of Guam has an increase of workforce in the future. They know what they're doing and we're really proud of them. So we're in partnership with them, that organization.
And again, it's this out-of-the-box or this question, because I want to support, I'm going to support this effort, but I believe that thinking outside of the box is really critical to the success of this. And getting Mary involved was just as much as getting out of the box as you possibly can get.
Thinking out of the box.
Yeah, so I would just like to also highlight that thanks to the 37th Guam Legislature and Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes, we do have the Wichi PSAP program, which already identifies 10 occupational areas where students who are interested in pursuing allied health professions, that we provide some type of scholarship for them with the requirement that they come back to Guam. We currently have three students in the program. Two of them have been funded by a private donor, and we are hoping to expand that in the upcoming academic year. So we, I believe, as of last week, we may have an additional seven applicants. And it's up to the institution and in working with partnership with the legislature and private donors to provide the additional funding for those individuals. But there is a payback requirement for them to come back home.
All right, thank you, Mary. And Madam Chair, again, for the record, I mean, I'm hoping that my questions will be incorporated into the markup on either one of these two bills. So thank you for the time again.
Thank you, Senator Gumitata, and Mrs. Ariola Theresa. I know exactly who you're talking about, it's Chalan Amtsi. So, yeah, so I've had a long conversations with them, Kayakamoto and Ethan Gumitata, and look forward to having more discussions with them in the very near future.
Actually, we're picking up Ethan for the summer.
Internship or?
Yes, he is going to be helping our epidemiologist.
Okay. Well, hopefully, in the committee, I can do a Zoom with everybody because they really are a bunch of students that want to come back to Guam. And the discussions we're having is, they want to give back and make things better so that when they do graduate, they can come back and work and hit the ground running. We're now going to have the closing remarks on Bill 12 from Senator Terlahe.
Sijjus Massey. Again, we're looking forward to the assessment of this building for the purposes of public health returning to it. And of course, after that, cost estimates and a design for that purpose as well. And I hope that things do not get changed in the middle of that before we are able to get that assessment. I don't believe, while I agree with partnerships, I do believe that Public Health already partners with Guam Community College just as all our hospitals do and our clinics do in order to expand these nursing programs and give actual training. So I have no doubt that that partnership will continue. I don't, if Public Health cannot build the building, then of course, we should look for other ways. But I don't think Public Health has even at all completed the assessment or even those options of how they can get back to this building. Previous directors did not seem to think it was a priority, apparently, because they never pursued the assessment for five years. While we had those who were actually on the front lines during COVID and pre-COVID, pre-fire, after the fire, and up to now, currently serving public health in these capacities where they take care of the clients that come in, they are telling us, and they told us, and they beg us to open Manilao, bring the services back there, in addition to the services in the north and in the south. They say we need these, all of these, we need, the clients need them. The clients are lost and that this should be urgent. They asked us to do that immediately when, in the past term of the legislature. They want, and just as Guam has qualified for, the Northern and the Southern Clinics because of need and possibly a mobile clinic because of need. Guam Memorial Hospital seeks qualification as an underserved area. I think the behavioral health already was designated that. And that's because of the need. And so I just want to focus back on the need. There is a decrease, according to the testimony before, as of 2023, of 48% decrease in services from pre-COVID, pre-closure levels. And that's significant. And that, you could tell, that really pain those who are providing these services and they are not shirking from the work, they want to get back to it. That 48% is the equivalent of going from 8,331 clinical encounters to 4,281. And that is significant in the areas of women's health, child health, family planning, non-communicable diseases, and communicable diseases as the director has testified today. I'm sad that those same employees could not be here today to testify because I know last time, they actually signed leave and took the risk of repercussions to attend and give us that testimony. And they begged us to immediately open, give them back their home, spread out the services through the villages so that, and bring these central services back to Manilao so that it would be convenient for the clients, not for the employees, but for the clients, to walk down the hall and avail of the multiple services in the building. And they asked leadership across the island to give us, to give us back our home in Manilao so that we can release some of the burden at the community health centers. And so I just believe Manilao remains a critical part of the services that Guam needs to provide to have a complete standard of care for medical and all these other services that are being provided to these same people. So I would ask, I thank you for all your testimony. I ask that this assessment be completed and that we be informed of the results. I mean, I didn't hear anything about that, but I'd like to be informed of the result before any policy decision is made to move forward on the design and of what type of design. Just, I think that would be a transparent thing for the people of Guam to know what our options were and how the decision was made on a final option. Sijjus Massey, Madam Chair. Thank you for this hearing.
Thank you, Senator Terlahe. And according to Ms. Ariola's testimony, the final assessment report for Phase 1 should be completed by July 18. And so at that time, once we get the information, we will pass that along before moving on to Phase 2.
If I may, Madam Chair, yes. So we have a final assessment report, July 18, that's the 120 days? Okay, so the 120-day report, Sijjus Massey, thank you.
Senator Barnes?
Sijjus Massey, Madam Chair Talu. You know, April will mark the 65th month since the former Public Health and Social Services Headquarters in Manilao was shut down. And looking at this government's record to rebuild JFK High School or reopen the Haganya Pool or choose the site of a new hospital, let alone to build one or to replace the Simon Sanchez High School's unsafe facilities, without trying something different, Madam Chair, we may be waiting five, 10, or 15 years more before Public Health actually returns to its headquarters. This measure, Madam Chair, is a continuation of a proposal previously introduced in the 36th and 37th Legislatures. And when approached to revive this effort, I was proud to answer the call. But I acknowledge a conflict that has arisen, that concerns that have been raised about this measure. But I always think that it's important to try and bridge the divide between reasonable people who may have a difference of opinion. I think we can all agree that we want the Department of Public Health and Social Services to have a healthy presence in Manilao again. That shared goal is at the very heart, Madam Chair, of Bill 21. And I want to say that I think we can also acknowledge that the department's former headquarters has been sitting idle. And while I acknowledge Department of Public Health and Social Services staff have been going above and beyond to make sure this building isn't completely ignored, it certainly hasn't gotten any better since it's shut down following an electrical fire in November of 2019. In fact, we senators have seen firsthand how that building has been stripped of its valuable infrastructure. In closing, Madam Chair, I want to thank Dr. Mary Okada, President of GCC, for not abandoning this effort and wanting to continue this win-win for both the Community College and the Department of Public Health and Social Services. I also want to thank the Guam Fire Department and of course, Department of Public Works for providing this body with updates on this involvement with this property. And it is critical to publicly disclose what damage has been observed so far. And lastly, and most importantly, I want to thank the staff and management of the Department of Public Health and Social Services. I understand your frustration at being forced to separate, scatter, and downsize without a plan for years and years to get you back to home base. I understand you wanting to protect your interests in this property and the valid feelings attached to a place where many of you grew professionally and where many of us on this island grew up. And I would never move forward with a bill that ignores your frustrations and dismisses your feelings. I'm asking us all to trust that we can team up with the best builders in the government of Guam to get to this win-win solution we all want for Department of Public Health and Social Services. Let's give GCC the chance to take this project to the finish line. Let's commit to staying close and making sure that this brand-new facility benefits GCC and its students, Department of Public Health and Social Services and its clients, and all the families within the Manilao, Baragada, MTM, Chalampagu, and Ordin, and Jonia, who could deserve government service closer to where they live. So Madam Chair, undankulana Sijjus Massey for giving me the opportunity to close on Bill 21-38 and ask my colleagues to look at this measure moving forward. And of course, under the premise that we hope that the assessment that is being, that has been procured and going out there, that when that is completed, it comes back to this august body so we can see what's best for all of us in the effort of collaboration. So thank you, Madam Chair, for hearing both bills together. Truly, truly appreciate it. Sijjus Massey.
Thank you, Senator Barnes. And before we conclude today's public hearing, I wanted to thank the panel for being here today and providing their testimony. Thank you, Senator Terlahe, and Senator Sean Gumitata, and all the other colleagues that were here today. For those of you who were not here to speak on the bill, and we are still accepting written testimony up until Friday, April 4, 2025, testimony must be addressed to the Committee on Health and Veterans Affairs and dropped to the Guam Congress Building or emailed to office.senatorbri@guamlegislature.gov. Again, that concludes today's hearing. It is now 10:47 PM. We are adjourned, I'm sorry, AM, 10:47 AM, we are adjourned. Sijjus Massey.